Okay, at seven AM, I'll call this meeting to order. And up and see the flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have confirmation and approval of the agenda.
There's a motion to approve the agenda. Do you know there are any changes to that?
Yeah, do you want to get a motion in a second?
So your motion makes motion.
Okay, the second. Okay, second, so any discussion? Oh, Madam President, I would like to amend the agenda because for item IV or VB, we do not have those reports ready. They will be coming, so we would just make it a release number of the agenda. Okay, so do I have an amended motion to approve the agenda as? For some seconds, do I? Do we need a roll call on me? Or bigger? I have a vote, same thing. Motion approved. Welcome visitors, we have Sue Dyker with us and then.
Okay, hold on a minute. Yes, as I said, we had an amended motion that we just voted on, now we have to. Make sure the original motion passes.
Oh, okay, so. Who will that?
Brian Roach, Ron DeSecond.
All in favor of the original? All right. I'll vote same thing. All right. We have a thank you note here from the family of Margaret Russbaum. Stodian Joan Ordner's mother, thank you for the memorial in honor of my mom to the library. So these are her family from the board. People Progress Monitoring, well, number three, choice ready. Okay, I'm gonna have Mr. Wentworth and Mr. Lynch come on up here because they're gonna, they're going to help out with some, I know, some questions that board members have and. Maybe give some updates and, and also their request that you see the four-year rolling plan. I think there were a couple other requests, so I sent those to these gentlemen and they're gonna share some of those, that information with you, so. I submitted to you both progress measure three point one and three point two, the report for that. And like I said, in, in the packet there, that this, you know, we just reported on this at the end of the school year, so there hasn't been much of a change. It's just I kind of adjusted it to being the end of the year, but. We met and exceeded the goal for the year for this. There were thirty-nine out of forty-seven juniors that scored above the thirty-one benchmark for goal progress major three point one. And the juniors that scored lower than thirty-one will have the opportunity to retake the ASVAB in the fall with the sophomores. And goal progress measure three point two, that we exceeded our goal for the, the year. Thirty-six out of thirty-six learners are choice ready and at least one indicator area sophomores are. But we are going to be looking at. Revamping our goal progress measures for three, just simply because there's that gap. I know we've talked about this before, but we already have a meeting, so that was Sue, myself, Mr. Wentworth and Mr. Lynch. And we're gonna sit down, we're gonna look at those. We got some new information from the state that I can share with anybody that's interested in it. Data from the state, ideas from the state, so we'll, we'll be using all of those resources and. Possibly keep these goals, possibly change them, you know, I just feel like as we roll along, we need to start looking at, you know, helping us figure out using these predictors of the goals at the end of the year and looking at revamping those. So using some for information that we have available plus the references. So you gentlemen wanna present or Mr. Wentworth, you want to present on those, the rolling for your, you know, the first questions?
Okay, so. Are you ready? And my, so what I do is. I have a, I use the Are You Ready system, which locked me up. Because I tried to get into. But what it is, is it's given by the state. It is a program where they're able to go in, it auto-populates a traditional. Four-year high school plan, where it'll automatically put in your fourth English, your three, uh, your three science, your three social studies. And. And then your three. Math classes, and then you can have your electives that come off as well. It, it connects with what we have in our school for our. For the classes, and then all they do is they go in and click on it, they. At the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, I'll have them go in and say, yep, I'm enrolled in this class. I'm planning on enrolling in this class, or I've completed it, and they can even prepare. The grade that they received in the class and it stores it right there in Are You Ready. There's a other option that the state has within Are You Ready is through the Compass Navigator that's on there. And they have to be used to. And you can use that. As that four-year rolling plan as well, which does the exact same things. It just adds in things like extracurricular activities, volunteer hours. Jobs that they've had outside of school, because what Compass is trying to do is try and pick up the student. And what they have as good resume to employers to be able to do cooperative work experiences. It, it's a lot of front-loading of businesses to be put into the system on what they would want to do. So it's one of those things where. I, two years ago, I had a. I had a career fair and I talked about Compass. I know Brian was one that was looking at putting a, that did the profile piece. When it's only one or two companies that do it, it doesn't get as much traction as it can. It's, and so that's where it's kind of that slow build-up for, for like. On, on that end, we're. You mean the compass isn't, it's not as connected as just us having an individual connection with each. Can you convert and businesses can also be able to connect a student to a cooperative experience. Here in Fargo, a lot of you, you go like, there's so many businesses that it'd be easier for them to, the students to find that. I just. And so I wish I had it up, I could put it up, but I'm having my issue. Are You Ready is. Away from it now, I'm trying to find my password. And so those are, so. I, I go through the Are You Ready and it really is just like a spreadsheet and they're able to change that as they go through. The other thing is, is I also have, once a year, I talk about here's the requirements as a freshman. For freshmen, our requirements, here's sophomore requirements, junior requirements, senior. To begin that four-year plan as well by like, here's the things that you have to do, here's the. And it's one of those things where. It's a working document and some of the students think that it has to be like, oh, this is the end. This is all of it now in set in stone, and it really is just to make sure that they're aware that they can make changes. And so that's kind of how the four-year plan. I mean, talking with other school counselors across the state, there's a whole bunch of different. It's one of those things that they don't, it, it, but it's not a direct like, this is the four-year rolling plan that everybody in the state does. Uniformed. Does that make sense?
So when you said you had a business fair, was that so? And I, this is, I'm like, you're gonna need you to.
Yeah, so I did, I did. Yep, I, when I did the career fair two years ago, I also put out, here is Compass, they're willing to. Walk you through how to do it. And then what, when you build your profile, you can say what kind of things that you'd like to be able to be like a job shadow, internship, a. I need to hire someone. You know, I can just, I need a job. And then the students would be able to see that when they open up their Are You Ready. And they could actually just. When they have their compass. The problem is that it's a little complicated, and so it's not the most, it's not the easiest use system. And sometimes in rural North Dakota, the best way of getting a job is talking to the people that are not using the computer tech. You know? All right.
My agent, he has some questions. Maybe, okay, I'm gonna put you on the spot. I thought some of the things we're gonna be trying to solve and, you know, some new changes and.
Yeah.
Why come on here, so like.
Yeah. We're doing with scheduling, so Mrs. Happy's gonna kind of, it's called like work-based readiness. So we're gonna have some, some where learners have the opportunity to kind of go out and just try and experiment with like different jobs. I know we have one that wants to do something at Sanford, so they're gonna be able to go and do that. Others are just like, let's say if they want to do. Health, if they want to go into, let's say, early childhood, different things like that, we can partner with these and. Mrs. Happy's gonna be great job reaching out to some different people and saying, hey, are you interested in this one, try this? We're trying to find ways to make it work with some of these kids' schedules. It's kind of similar with a cooperative work, but in the sense of they're not tied to that for the whole time. Say, hey, you're trying this, do you like this? I don't know, this is gonna work for me, all right, hey, let's go look and see what else is there out there. So this would be for juniors and seniors that are, hey, I'm thinking about, I know, we had someone that worked with. PT last year with, we were just kind of trying it out. Hey, it was great, like that's something like that I'm gonna be going into, I want to do that. Others, like, let's say if they are going to medical, they're saying, oh, actually, I really don't want to do that. That's something I, all right, hey, what else are you interested, what's something else that you want to step into? So just kind of getting that piece to get more like the career exploration there to like, hey, this is what you want to do for the rest of your life. Hey, let's just try it out now and see if that's what you really want to do. I mean, we can do opportunities even down here in school. We have our jetting program, I mean, hey, the kids are, hey, I want to do more, I want. You can do that over here.
The, the community wants it too, because I know that. There were some concerns or voice and feedback that, hey, you guys came to us a couple of years ago. And said you were gonna start doing this stuff and then it just kind of fell to the wayside and, you know, you know. Now, we've got our, our gears rolling now and we're gonna start to reach back out to them and, you know. And the biggest thing is not getting tied into we're not gonna change during the school year, right? Is it, don't get, well, this is what our handbook says, this is what our policy, but we want to look at making it for our kids. And if we have to change it in the middle of the year to make it better for the kids, that's what we're gonna do. I'm talking about all sorts of different options. You got kids that are possibly looking at a GED too, you know, we talked about that last year. There's a bunch of things that Jordan is doing this year to try to help those kids, because we're seeing a population of kids and I don't know if it's. COVID or what it is, you know, these kids that are saying, hey, I, I don't really need school, I think I'm just gonna drop out. And even if parents don't agree to it, they're still disengaging from us, so trying to figure out ways to keep those kids engaged. And if it means we're sending them out to do different things that, you know, aren't, what we've normally done traditional, but at least we're finding something to keep those kids in school, because we know that's so important. They need to graduate with that, um, a high school diploma at the minimum. So we're trying to do all sorts of things, trying to be super flexible on it. That is too, that we're working together to try to change the way that we've been doing things and we have a labor. In state, it's prime, they want us to be doing these things differently, so.
Any questions?
We can add one more thing.
Yeah, that's great.
And the, and it started off last year because in your junior and senior year, you're a lot of, we have a lot of students that. Are really go-getters and they'll, they'll double up a math or sophomore year to get ahead, because they intestin to getting algebra. Their eighth grade year to be doing algebra eighth grade year. So what ends up happening is they have some of their requirements already completed by, so their senior year, there's only two requirements that you have. In the school, which is in English and a P O D. And related to where every week. That, we haven't had kids take a, a sophomore, a freshman, as a freshman, take a social studies. To get done by their junior year, because there's only three, there's only three requirements. You know, we haven't had anybody double up in English yet. And yet, you can also use a dual credit public speaking as an English credit. And if they wanted to take another, like a classic literature dual credit, that could work as another English. Right, it's like they could be done with their graduation requirements of twenty, of the twenty-two credits. Before their senior year, and then you have to fill it with six class, we have a policy where it's six classes that you have to take, so that. So then, some students, so one student was like, you know what, I really, instead of filling my class with some dual credit. That I might like or maybe not, and I try, then I'm doing a cooperative work, I really like it, and I do another. At that, and so that's where it came in. And so we, that, that's kind of the reason why, so the seniors get a little bit more flexibility in their special, there's going to be two requirements.
We are up, um, what's making future?
She has Karen mentioned.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a dual credit class, so she's gonna be teaching that class here, so we're trying to do some more things like, you know.
Can kids get credit for football, volleyball?
Oh, yeah, that's another one.
That's something that's looking, they have to be assigned at ASVAB. So.
Yeah, if you got a kid that's playing two or three sports during the year and they complete those seasons in good standing, you know, and. Why shouldn't they get credit for that? So we're looking at, Jordan and I have had those conversations, I think very well after the spear course. Nikki, there's something else I was thinking about, oh. I remember when we came back from Bismarck and we'd gone out and we had visited, or visited the school out there and the academy, so. Jordan and his teachers are actually working on a pilot.
Yeah, we can try to, we're trying to figure out a way to kind of. Hit some of these kids' schedules and. What works for them, like how can we get all of these scores that they need while, like either like, I'd say they're trying to catch up on stuff that they've missed, or they're just having a conflict or something, so, all right. Or so we're gonna kind of have a flexible academy, kind of a student model, which other schools have adopted. See how that works and just go with it, but again, like that's, that's the thing that we've been talking about, is like, reason to give our kids options to be successful and. Hey, this has given them that chance to do it, so. Any other questions?
We have some like a goal progress monitor. Okay, so when we're, seniors retake the ASVAB in the fall, will, will their results be included with the juniors that are taking it for the first time?
Great question, so.
So with the ASVAB. Okay, so I'm, 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 so this is how I read your question and how I answered. They don't, the, the seniors, every individual ASVAB score goes with them directly. We don't take an ASVAB score and take like, here's the class of twenty twenty-four, their ASVAB score and their averages and things like that. We don't do that to the state anywhere, uh, we, because there's schools that don't even do the ASVAB. Uh, don't even offer it to their students. So it's just a score that goes with them. I collect the data and would say, hey, for the, for the juniors, for the seniors, here's what they did. Here's how they did, so like, it's just a collection that we do in, does that make sense?
It does, so next year, if some of those.
Yep.
Did not get the.
Retake.
Decide to retake it with our six or whatever, um, those will all be gashed together for this goal.
Okay, that's a, yeah. That's something I think we're gonna have to talk about when we meet together. Are we gonna separate them out, you know, looking at the goal progress monitoring? I think we could keep the same goal progress monitoring and do the juniors, but also report back on, here were the kids that retook it and separate those out maybe, or, you know. Yeah, we're gonna have to look at that.
Yeah, because like, because if we say here, after the first time, they didn't have ASVAB as a whole group, here's what that percentage was. Now, a year later, here, here's how that moved up, that's something that.
Yeah, that would be an.
I, I would keep them with, I'd keep them with their, with their class.
Okay.
You know, I would, but I wouldn't put the seniors with the juniors, I'd put the seniors with their seniors.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, because they have another year of classes under their belt. Um, plus they've already taken the test, so knowing the test is a format.
And, and it's all an in-house percentage that we're looking at anyways, so. Yeah, that's how we would do it.
And then are the students who did not meet the thirty-one benchmark on track to graduate choice ready in the other areas?
Uh, and so. I want to show you what's. The, okay, so the choice ready document. It is, it's something that Mr. Lynch and I. We sit down at the end of the year and see, we have thirty, we had thirty-one seniors. And so at the end of the year, Mr. Lynch and I sat down and we just filled out the choice ready document that we submitted to the state. We, we can do that within two hours, you know, in the morning. And so instead of going through and. And, and so there's. So. It's just a list of the students that you have. And you click on it and then it opens up and then you have the tabs that you can click on for their indicators, right? And so. Uh, what we did, so that's how we do that in, at the end of the year. I think that after going to the workshop, I saw a report that. Writes it down by category. So that. Uh, very quickly. Without, like, without, so you have this student's name, but then they throw that percentage of essential skills. How many made the essential skills? By a check marker and X, how many made it in each, in post-secondary, workforce-ready, military and things like that. And so if I go into choice ready and do their report as freshman and each year do that, I should be able to use the report to. Pump it out a little bit better to have like a percentage.
Okay.
Be, because like in the workforce ready. It pulls, they pull from different sections of our school and one of them's like your CTE courses, that'll be an automatic thing that they'll pull. But the, but the, uh, the, uh, career-ready practices, they do out at the center every year. And that would be, and that's something that I just manually just click yes on the button.
So right now that, you're only doing that for the graduates?
I usually, I do it for the guys. Well, and what I do is when I go into the classrooms, I'll have that choice ready chart. And I'll go, okay, guys, what do you have? In my senior meeting, I sit down into. In year and we take that choice ready chart, we go, which ones do you have? Because. Like. The vast majority of our kids, we're, I'm talking ninety-three percent of them, in the essential skills. We had two kids that didn't make the essential skills. The vast majority of them, I just, during their regular education, they get, the vast majority. It's, it's the things like my GPA. Is below two point eight, my ACT score wasn't a twenty-four, my, um, my ASVAB score was below thirty-one. I mean, those are years, or I mailed a PE, or I got a D in a PE class. You know, in the three years I've been here. Like, and then ISS OSS, those are our big, our big kicker. And then we have, like, if we can make it, let's go into the other, into the other question that I had. If we can make it on the essential skills where like. I, I thought about taking a trip to like, this attention to a power or to like Stone Battle. You know, the multicultural, because then. Uh, everybody does a career exploration by, with freshman year going up to Florida, that automatically is staying there just with that. But with the career fair, college fair, that's part of it too, so they have that essential, essential skill indicator automatically. If we can do a multicultural piece, if we make, this is a, might be a stretch, but like having this. The teachers do a twenty-first century skill assessment of the kids. And through, once or twice throughout their four years, we can click up, we demonstrate, they demonstrate twenty-first century skills. Yeah, we get those three and we're looking for one, two years of extracurricular activity, sort of curricular. We're at ninety-five percent attendance, so even if the kid doesn't show up ninety-five percent of the time at school. If they did a capstone project, right, if we, we said seniors do a capstone project, we do check with that. You know, we have, we could just make it to where with those. Indic, with those four indicators, it's automatically without ever participating in a co-curricular expert. However you feel about that, you know what I mean?
Right. But and it's talking about is those adult behaviors changing, right? That we create a system where the kids can succeed because we're doing those offerings, right? Against this thing, those things, those are all things that are, are controlled beyond the kids in order to ensure that.
If we do a, if we do a day, a half day of giving, we've been talking about how they make that work to where we do the twenty-five hours volunteer work. Within the four years and have that check mark, it makes it, it like, then it doesn't matter if they're in a, like. It doesn't matter if they're in a co-curricular, extracurricular or a. Or, or they don't have them ninety-five percent.
So what are our co-curricular?
Uh, that is anything from Boy Scouts, it doesn't have to be directly tied to this, this school. Uh, as well, so it's kind of, it's a, like, they try to make it as, as helpful to. Even make that. Or age would work as one, uh, it could be a youth group. These, you know, of, of one of our little church. There's.
Then what percentage of our twenty twenty-four graduating class were choice ready?
Uh, it was seventy for, it was seventy. Seventy point nine seventy. And I had, and it was the ASVAB score.
She wants to know who the point.
Because it was twenty-two out of thirty-one.
So with that, and what were they, what were the majority of them lacking for the choice ready?
Um, so it was. Okay, so there were two kids that didn't get essential skills, uh, because they didn't have any extracurricular, co-curricular and they didn't get ninety-five percent. Um. So they missed if I, they had one or two indicators they needed, but. Then you had. Post-secondary sixty-four percent, so twenty out of the thirty. Uh, one made it in post-secondary, uh, usually what made them not make it was their GPA. And then, under military, it was a combination of two kids with, oh, eight thirty-one on their ASVAB. And, uh, and then four kids with.
So with those that did not get the thirty-one, was that their second try on them?
No, they just got.
And that's what we're trying.
And that's what we're trying to make it to where they get that, they get another option of trying.
Somebody had a question about the ISS and OSS, that we have a plan for those kids, you know, in order to do. Not reparations.
Restitution.
Restitution out of it.
Yep.
And some of those things, we can have some restitution, like, that, we can definitely come up with a plan, but if they get in trouble with the law or they have a weapon violation or some kind of violation that they're, yeah, there's, you know, that's just.
Yeah, some have done like social justice, so, and so it's a. Um, I talked to one. Um, I talked to one, I talked to one senior last year about. Would you ever want to go up again, up to a board and say, hey, I made my mistakes, and I really did this stupid thing, and I feel really better? I, I made amends. It was, and then this student was like, what do I get out of it? I'm like, you become choice-ready, and I, and the students, I can get a cord, and then they're like, yeah, I don't want to do that. So there's a little bit, like, the, the buy-in isn't as huge for them to make those pieces. Uh, with the North Dakota State Scholarship going to that choice, to aligning a lot with the choice-ready. Uh, that's why the juniors or our seniors this year, there were a lot of them that were like, I want to retake my ASVAB to get a fifty. For the North Dakota State Scholarship. So that becomes, so the ASVAB becomes more of a, a piece that can be done. Uh, I just need to be able to have three or four kids, and they can retake the ASVAB throughout. Uh, they'll come down individually, the military will come, and individually do that.
Okay, so on that, what is the plan for the students retaking the ASVAB this fall, so that they can be better on?
Yeah, so that's what, right now, it's, we're planning on having the ASVAB in October. Uh, so, I'm gonna invite the seniors who want to retake it, if that's a time that they can retake it, then. Uh, and then I'm gonna work on getting that, uh, another time in this school year for them to retake.
And then, are you planning on doing anything with those students to help them prepare for it?
Yeah, just, uh, been talking with teachers to go over the ASVAB, what it looks like. And, and then, I'm trying to get them onto, are you ready to do some? To get licensers to, uh, do some tutoring on, so.
I guess they're the ones driving wanting to retake it.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be doing those things to improve, right, versus us saying, retake this, you know, or.
Right.
It, I was, I was pleasantly surprised at how many were like, almost two, like, I can read. But, I think our students can get a thirty. Uh, especially if they retake.
Well.
Yeah, they're familiar with what it is, because it's a different test, and it's a really great test for, uh, career exploration. Uh, they do all in, because the military kind of uses that ASVAB score to decide, kind of what jobs. You would really work well in the military, both with civilian.
Right, we went to, what areas are these students on track to graduate choice-ready in? I think that was kind of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I, I need to.
No, I, no, I just realized that when I read it. Okay, then. And then, the plan, uh, to ensure they will complete all of the choice-ready components, I think we've gone over that, so.
I think just even, kind of tracking each of those grades, you know, that'll help us out too, because it needs to that it's like the white came out there.
Right.
You know, to help us with that, but, you know. But the hard, the hard part is that gets thrown in there, that they could be military-ready when they're sophomores, and lose that military-ready, right? If they are ISS or OSS.
Yeah, uh, and they take the ASVAB.
Yeah, so you know, there's things that, they, they're looking like they're on course, and then they could be derailed.
And then, what was done differently this year to ensure students were choice-ready in one indicator area?
I, I, the focus on it, and not, that isn't what we did, but I think the focus on it really helped us, because we knew we weren't playing well on the ASVAB, right? And even though, I don't know if that was our very best measure at the time, that was our lagging data, that was our indicator, right? So then we started to do some things and becoming aware of those kids that aren't doing well, and I think it's point two about now the scholarship is tied to it. So it has something like, the kids, what's in there for me, you know, so now the money, so you have that incentive in order to do that. And I just think the focus on it, and again, it's gone every year to the training for the state. We don't have to go every year, but it has gone, we've gotten scholarships, like, or not scholarships, grants. Um, in fact, we're gonna put in for a grant this year, you know, that's paying and helping us to offer more things to our kids, and. There's a lot of it.
Yeah, last two years, it's one thousand, and that's our funds are running, so it'd be as much, but they're finding ways to make it for. Um, and it's really just looking at what are the things that we don't offer, and what are things that we can to make it to where? Because, uh, they made a good point, try to get a hundred percent essential skills, because then that's the highest number you can. For choice ready, and then what are your lacking pieces in the, in the various, uh, choice-ready indicator? And which ones are unique to the school that you could maybe add three or six, you know, get more people? Because like, if you're a band kid, that, that's an easy way of being, I mean, post-secondary. You know, by having three, uh, courses, uh, a semester and a half of BAM or choir, you know?
So maybe this school, we're gonna start looking at our own incentives besides the, you know, you know, a lot of kids are driven by that, some maybe aren't, so.
So Ed, do you have any plans this year to have like an outreach to parents to explain choice-ready a little bit more? Because I think there's a lot of misconception, or even just not understanding what it is.
Yep.
So I feel like if we have the parents that have the buy-in on that as well.
Yeah.
And just push those kids.
Uh, one plan that I, I'm looking at doing this year is having like, uh, twice a semester. Talking to freshmen, sending stuff out to freshman parents, sophomore parents, junior parents. Here's what to kind of look for, and I'll do, and then I can throw that at choice ready. Um, with it, it, I mean, that graph is confusing, and I know that it's gonna be confusing. Uh, senior parents when they go to, like, and they'll probably go between the two. Uh, and that, no matter how much education you'll do with it, I'm sure that a lot, but, uh, it's one of the, one of those things that I'm looking. Because like, uh, when Sonia in the board meeting asked, Abby, what? Hey, do you know anything about it? No, ever, so I was like, I needed to be communicating out.
Um, they will have their final data on choice-ready for the entire state September, mid-September, so.
If they put that out someplace for the public then still.
Yeah, it will be online, but, I mean, we can put a link on our webpage, but, I'm, I want to see the data too, because it's gone up. I mean, the state has significantly gone up because there's been that focus on it in schools. I know that year when we scored zero, right, because we didn't report correctly, that was a big black eye for us. So it was like, that's not gonna happen again, for Ed, gets tired of me like, hey, have you done choice ready?
Well, and I think it's good for, for probably to realize that this is not an old public school thing, that the state.
I don't think it's making our kids better, right? And, and so, you know, where is this school we're more aware of? It's not just the track to go to college, there's all this other stuff out there.
Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheila. So I am looking for a motion to accept the progress monitoring for goal number three, choice-ready. Hang on, whoops, do you have a second?
Second.
Eight seconds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, both same thing. Motion passes, um, next we have the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Adam here, you mind if I chime in really quick? I just want to lift up a, a glow for, for your whole organization. You could very easily have just said, we exceeded the target, yay us, we look good. And, and ask some questions and move on. You guys are really using this to drive your progress towards the goal, and it is evident. In the fact that you're, we already have this meeting scheduled, right? That you've identified, you want something that is even more predictive than what you have, and want to make improvements to that. You're not making changes or proposing changes to your progress measures, because the target's too hard, and you're not meeting it. You're doing it very intentionally, and I just felt that should be noted, because that's a behavior. That sometimes takes longer for boards and superintendents to get to. You're there very early in this process, um, and I just, I just wanted to make note of that for you guys.
Thank you, Sue. Do I have a motion to accept that consent agenda, or to approve the consent agenda, excuse me? Take a moment, do you have a second? Thousand seconds. Shannon, do you want to do the roll call on the sheet?
Ron DeDe, yes, Patty Carlson here, Sheila Nagel, yes, Brian Syar.
Yes, motion passes five zero, um. Next on the agenda, reports, those were just for your information. Um, moving on to item five, items for discussion and possible action. Item A, approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four money transfers, Shannon, what it, just to a quick explanation of that?
Yes. Okay, so, uh, in your board packet, there is a little, um, consider general entries for this. Um, for the special reserve, I'm taking half of the ending balance, moving it to the general fund. This was voted on as part of our budget package on October sixth. We are required. It wasn't, it's not required to take fifty percent of the money. That is fifty percent. Uh, the building fund, this also was approved on the, uh, October sixth, twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-three, for our twenty-three, twenty-four budget. This was the remaining amount of the, um, T F Powers contract for the science floor. Um, to transfer those remaining dollars into the building fund. That also, uh, you'll note, this transfer allows our building fund to be positive at the end of June thirtieth. Obviously, if I don't make this transfer, our building fund will be negative, um, three hundred some thousand dollars. Um, the hot lunch fund needs seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents to make that a zero balance. Which by century code cannot be, uh, negative, so. Um, the, the original budgeted amount was forty-six thousand, eighty-eight, did you see our expenses were a little bit higher? And our, um, our income was, was lower, so. That fifteen thousand and that thirteen thousand make up the twenty-eight thousand dollar difference. And then, uh, our activity fund to take two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and transfer, move it to the activity fund. To make those activities that were in, that were negative to a zero balance. There were some that were positive, so I didn't do anything with those, I left them as positive.
Any questions? So, the fifteen thousand dollars less than expected can be, how much fund is that due to delinquents accounts?
No, if you go back to the twenty-three, twenty-four, I, I had estimated the number, this income sales of. Well, right, it could be, it could be some delinquent, but we didn't have fifteen thousand dollars in delinquent accounts. It's a combination.
Yeah, it's a combination of some delinquent accounts, and then just not, not as many sa-, as much sales as I had projected.
There's some of them that are, that have been paying, that have been calling in, like, what's not, um, losing their negative, yeah, I know. And then they've paid it out since July first, it's not reflected here, but, no, I have, no. I, I suspect, um, once things kind of settle down, after the first couple of days or weeks of school. Um, I know there's accounts that are, that I should be, that I, I would like to send to collections. That just never got paid up, so they're starting to be here, like, like a lot.
Yeah, so how come we didn't do them right after school?
We, well, we gave them some time to, to do it, to come up, made it up.
We try to be careful and thought of it, thoughtful on the ones we send, just simply because they're written off as bad. They'll never collect them, so then we have to, I mean, we will hopefully, but we write on them as bad debt, because we might not.
Yeah, but if they're not making any effort, right? You know, if they haven't made any efforts.
And, and sometimes it's repeat.
Yeah, if they give enough, then they pay. Um, and, oh, there's some out there that, yeah, we send them to collections, but. You know, they're, you know, they don't. They, oh, even though collections is sending out the, um, the notices, we're still not getting, like. Either they're jumping jobs, or they're not making enough, or created out of reasons, so, just, um, no. And, of course, we have commission fees, so it's not profitable, I mean. I think it's a thirty-three percent commission fee by the time the attorney takes off their information, filing fees with the sheriff. So I like to try and collect.
Let's go. I think we should send them to collection right after school, though, give them ten days. I mean, they've had all year, right, they haven't done anything, most of them don't do anything all year.
Well, sometimes the summer helps for them to catch up, because they're not, yeah, you have a summer.
But since how many of them fall in and stay there?
You'll see what.
Giving a couple months, and they'll get a pay.
Oh, I don't, I didn't have any, but, but they've come in now, they just let it be negative, and they're, they come in now, and then they go ahead and pay the bill.
You know, it's seven days, like July first, or the middle of July, or December, you know, because. They're either gonna do it right away, or they're gonna panic right when school starts, and at that point, we're, um, there are, so, we just.
June first.
Seven days.
Yeah.
I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four money transfer. Say, who else, do you have a second?
Second.
Three seconds, um, can you call the roll call on that, Shane?
Ron DeDe, yes, Sheila Nagel, yes, Patty Carlson, Brian Syar.
Yes.
Monica Hindbug.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um, we removed the, the, yeah, the annual report, um, is that something that needs to be turned down soon? Is that a special meeting that we're looking at, or?
It will most likely have to be a special meeting, because I believe that's a September tenth deadline.
So, keep that on your readers. Feature meetings, special meeting Friday, September twentieth, our public tax levy hearing. Regular meeting Friday, September twentieth, um, following at seven thirty. Twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget will be finalized then, and then the next regular meeting after that, Friday, October eighteenth, at seven AM. Anything else for the bit of the order?
I just see one thing, what are we doing on the, what are we doing on donations or getting that?
The account was opened, uh, I think it was finalized last week, so.
So, what, what are we gonna go about, how push and?
Well, I, um. We've probably noticed, or we're already telling people that it's up there. Um, I have to, I, I have a template, um, that I, I found. From another organization that, um, gives it to the elevators and says, if you have push those or rate. Please send this along with the check to Edward Jones, and then I have TJ, or not TJ, Tommy Sue will notify me. When it comes in, I have online, I'm trying to get online access, that's been taking a hot minute. So, yeah, it was just a lot of lessons, but it's not checking, but it's gonna screw some wrong. I just thought I had to give out my first board, so. It's not open yet, so. Or I don't have, I know it's open, I don't have, I don't have online access yet to get access, so it's. All right, I don't have, I know it's open, I don't have, I don't have online access yet to get access, so it's. A very small.
Okay, anything else? Hey, meeting adjourned at seven fifty AM.